All right, we will follow the order here. The North Canton Special Planning Commission meeting. It is April ninth, twenty twenty four, and it's six oh one P M. First thing on the agenda is our vote.
Mister Del Pase?
Here.
Mister Mahalson?
Here.
Mister Sarah?
Present.
Mister LaPage?
Here.
Mister Reed?
Here.
Next item in the agenda is our minutes for consideration. This will be submitted in the February seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes for approval. The House of the Commission. We're going to have a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve February seventh.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. We could do a, we'll call a vote on that, Julie.
Mister Mahalson?
Yes.
Mister Del Pase?
Yes.
Mister LaPage?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is an adjudication hearing. This is for an application number C U S E twenty four dash one, two oh three Apple Grove Street Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. It's a condition when you permit for a Wendy's drive through. And before we get started, I just want to make a general note for everybody in the room. Let's be, make sure we speak loud enough tonight. We do have the doors open. Let's see if the folder is here. So just to make sure we can hear everything for recording purposes, that would be helpful if you do get up and speak. So first, if anyone from the applicant or representative would like to speak, please bring yourself to the podium. State your name and address for anyone that comes to the podium or would like to speak. Do you need to state your name and address?
Very good. My name is Brad Urban. I represent the owners of Roundtable Instruction Management. And my address is ninety four twelve St. Brown, two ninety two, in Ridgeway, Ohio. So I'll be here, I'm here tonight to petition for a conditional use permit for the Wendy's drive through located at the address two oh three Apple Grove Street. The Stock Group has a long reputation, a long-standing reputation with North Canton and has several Wendy's projects already in place. And they feel that this app, this location is going to be a primary additional location for their use. If you approve that, I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of the owner. If you have any questions.
Hi. Thank you. I believe from the city's perspective, Martin, would you speak on this issue?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The, the project is located in the Main Street North Gateway. The restaurant itself is a permitted use. The drive-through portion of it is what brings us here tonight. Staff has met with the applicant as well as the design team. We've conducted a number of meetings, in fact, to follow up to the pre-application meeting where we've discussed conditions for, excuse me, comments for the project, in which each of the comments have been addressed. And by the way, at each of those meetings, we have invited other city departments, such as the fire department, engineering, who all provided comments on the, on the property. Each of those comments so far have been incorporated into the supplemental that is before you tonight. From the engineering standpoint, the city engineer has reviewed it. The comment that the city engineer had for the ingress egress for the site is, the, the site is primarily being viewed as existing with the condition that the ingress egress off of Apple Grove is right in, right out, which has been incorporated into the plans before you tonight. The, the other access off of the Meyer Drive will continue to be utilized and as such, with it being the existing. The traffic impact study was not required as part of this, given the existing nature of it. As you've noticed, this is a redevelopment project. Staff has found this to be a consistent use and a compatible use with the Main Street North Gateway. The, the recommendation from staff is for an approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
This is property right here, nine, eight dollars.
That's correct. Immediately to the West.
So in order to turn, we, these on Apple Grove, they will have to allow to the main drive. Make a look in turns.
That's correct. They would use the Myers next to go out from there.
And that's going to be the main exit.
Yes.
On that, onto it.
Correct.
The other question came down, does the city have any intent of putting any of your on-site barriers on Apple Grove?
I'm not aware of any plans to do so at this point.
We, we do have a right turn right out, concrete median, as you probably seen. But no, no barrier for turning some of them.
At this time, I would open it up for any questions from any other audience members. With this item and any other items, you know, state your name and address if you'd like to speak, and then time to about five minutes for first thing goes.
Ken with Talis.
You're to speak up, please.
Ken with Talis, W I T A L I S, three thirty nine Corning Street. My house won't be affected, but I know there were other people at other meetings that were mentioning street lighting.
I, I'm sorry, people at other meetings that would what?
Mentioning the street lighting in the situation that it might cause excess light into their homes. So I don't know if that's being considered planning.
This is for the, for the Wendy's property?
Oh, sorry. I was late. I forgot it was. I'll be back.
Pause.
No.
Pause.
Word helped me up. I wasn't here for the beginning, so. My bad, sorry.
Any other questions? Any further questions from the question numbers? We'll see if there is no other questions or comments, would entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve application number C U S E dash twenty four dash one.
We have the motion. We have a motion and a second. Do a long call vote, please.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister LaPage?
Yes.
Mister Mahalson?
Yes.
Mister Del Pase?
Yes.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Next portion of our agenda, thank you, next portion of the agenda is our public hearing session. I would like to make just a, a adjustment to this since we did just discuss the Wendy's property two oh three Apple Grove. I would like to move up item agenda five D for the development review application for the same property during the next line. That way we can discuss this while stretching our lines. So the next item on the agenda will be the development review application number D P L N dash two four dash three at two oh three Apple Grove Street Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. This is a development review for condition use permit application C U S E dash twenty four dash one to allow redevelopment projects that are going to be described there in the rest. Okay. If, if you would like to add anything to?
I, I would, I would. Mister Reed, you spoke up, said that was the old real estate building.
Yes.
This is going to be a very unique project. It's going to be one of the most unique projects for the Wendy's corporation in the entire state and surrounding states. And the reason for that is that this project that we're going to be doing, we're going to be reutilizing the basement factor that's in that building right now. And our new Wendy's footprint is going to fit over top of that basement. We're designed at what will be almost three thousand square foot in the Wendy's. This is going to be, this has been the highlight of corporate Wendy's right now. And the reason why is because now we can bring in people to do a training for the entire north half of the pipe of this area, which is going to be very exciting for the North Canton group. This building also is a new G and G model with a sixty seat function, which has not been built yet in a while, and we're going to be building it here in North Canton. Like to be. And that being all, all three thousand square feet is the largest Wendy's that will be built. The new G and G models are only fifteen hundred two. This and now is going to be almost thousand. Mister Eric, I did send you, or sent a veranda about giving, the entire building is going to be encapsulated in not wood, which is a very new and unique building model and building design model. And I think if you can show it on the screen, it's going to fit together. There you go. It's going to look very modern, comparable to any other project we have in the North Canton area or any other Wendy's in northern Ohio. So with all of these advantages and with this site specifically, and being having to reutilize a lot of the infrastructure that's there in that project, that's why hoping that this panel and this commission can actually approve us from this development agreement to get this and move it here at the Montague. I'm open to any questions anybody may have on the project.
Yes, from the city's perspectives?
Thank you, Chairman. Again, the development plans were reviewed with staff and the other departments of the city team. The staff does find that the plans are in substantial conformance with the zoning code, namely chapter eleven thirty six. Couple of things I would like to point out on that is, you know, the walk-in cooler you can see, which is the bronze colored shorter section of the structure there is the walk-in cooler. As I mentioned, they've colored it, so it does blend in with the structure. It's an exterior type of walk-in cooler. That was definitely, you know, helps bring that in compliance with the zoning, particularly with the facade. The facade again was consistent with chapter eleven thirty six. The other thing I would like to point out on the west side, the landscaping does go over the property line. The owners have coordinated with the adjacent property owners who, as I understand, there is a consensus in that agreement. And so with that, staff recommends an approval for the development review with the condition that we get a copy of that executed agreement, ensuring that that landscaping remains. And, and just to point out, that's to meet the requirement for that five-foot landscaping strip between the drive-through parking area and the, and the parking.
Questions from many members.
So you're saying that the basement of the existing building is going to be maintained?
Yes.
And the new Wendy's is being built over it?
Yes.
Then you're going to use that for training areas?
We're going to use it for what they consider a coaching area. So what happens is that the corporate, corporate people from Columbus will come up. They will hold their regional coaching meetings for the district and regional managers. It's not a training facility for all employees. It's, it's just a coaching area for those type of venues.
And that size of that area looks like it's what's being forty percent of the work for.
Correct.
So what's the occupancy going to be for that area?
The occupancy for the entire structure, I believe, is sitting at ninety nine. Yes. Hey, we have to, you have to also envision that that space down below or in that basement is not utilized all the time. It's utilized only during specific times of the year in those regional meetings and workplaces. And the entire structure is going to be sprinkled, the basement is sprinkled as it is today. I did talk to Martin earlier. We'll all end up having to extend that riser up to the upstairs to the first quarter of the Wendy's, and that will be a sprinkled space also.
Chairman, if I may, along these lines, I thought this was very interesting and a bit of a unique redevelopment project is, first, I did have a number of questions, which they were answered satisfactorily, actually, very impressively really by the development team as far as how this will be pulled out. And one of my big questions was, well, the, the basement seems to be consistent with the size of the proposed Wendy's, which is apparently smaller than the covered bill.
That's correct.
So the, the basement, hopefully enough, as it sits, is not as large as the cover bill. But, but the basement will remain intact in its current configuration.
Yes, sir.
So the other thing I found interesting was, is then, then I start thinking from a structural standpoint. Well, how are we going to support those basement walls during the transition of demolition and obstruction? And again, that was answered with, well, we have existing bar joists, and we have concrete deck pan construction for the bar joists, which will remain in place. That's going to be the restraint for the upper portion of that angle. And, and it was further explained to me that there will be such coordination for the construction that, correct me the terminology, because I don't want to put words in your mouth, but as, as I envisioned it was, as soon as that structure was demolished, the new structure, the walls will be constructed on site and almost immediately be placed on the existing slab foundation.
That, that's exactly right. We, we have a very unique situation from a construction perspective. I can't go in and just do a complete demolition to this project because then I'd be opening up that entire basement to rain, debris, and, and other detrimental things to that basement. I cannot even bring heavy equipment onto that pan deck. So it's going to be more of a, and I've asked Martin about this, that we come in and do a selective demo on the inside, remove out everything we can from the inside, make it an empty shell, take all the drywall off, expose all the exterior walls, and then we start picking off one thing after another as far as the roof choice, as far as the walls themselves. At the same time that is all taking place, I want to have a contractor, my framing contractor out on site, framing up walls with all my roof toys or trusses sitting on, on the site. So once all that comes down, then we can go ahead and start standing stuff back up and getting it waterproofed in. As with Ohio, and as we've told in the last three weeks, we've got a lot of rain to have to deal with, and we're trying to mitigate that circumstance. And I've explored other options of maybe putting an actual tent across the entire project. Just doesn't work, just doesn't work. And I think this is the best, best laid plan that we have.
Well, so I assume that the city's looked at the parking situation and the full capacity occupancy of the Wendy's.
We did look at the development review of the plans and, as I mentioned, this is in the Main Street North Gateway. So parking, as you know, is, the count is really on a demand basis. The ordinance leaves off to the property owner. But of course, once they do provide parking, then the parking needs to comply with the ordinance, which they have.
Official numbers.
Mister Sarah asked my question.
Is there any questions from, comments from the audience speaking on this issue? Okay, seeing that there's no more questions, would entertain a motion on this agenda? Motion to approve, ask me. I will second. Okay, so that is the motion and a second for the development review application number D P L N dash two four dash three. Do a long call vote, please.
Mister Mahalson?
Yes.
Mister Reed?
Yes.
Mister Sarah?
Yes.
Mister Del Pase?
Yes.
Mister LaPage?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number two eight dash two zero two four. This is an ordinance amending chapter eleven thirty six, Main Street Districts Regulations, specifically section eleven thirty six, dot one, two, fences and screening of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton. In order to allow non-viral fencing in Main Street Center Districts and establish regulations on fence heights in all Main Street Districts. So at this time, I believe Mister Young would like to talk on the city's behalf regarding this ordinance.
Hello, Director, my name is Ben Young. I'm the clerk of city council. So I'm here for all three remaining items that are on your bench tonight, which are coming to you from city council. So the first item, ordinance twenty eight dash twenty four, as the title says, would allow fences in Main Street Center District, which is right here downtown. At present, fences are not permitted in that district for commercial properties. At the time it was enacted, the council at that time wanted to keep downtown feelings open. Wanted to allow fences, they wanted to encourage pedestrian. Some of the recent developments downtown, it has become apparent that, especially on large developments, fences can serve a very helpful purpose in segregating off uses that might not be as pedestrian-friendly from the site. For instance, the school district would like to build new parking as well as a library on Portage, and as well as put some swarx fields along Portage, and they'd like to be able to put a fence there to keep balls from rolling out, to keep children from running into the street. So the amendments as written for you would allow metal fences, but not chain link, in the Main Street Center District up to six feet tall, provided you have more than one acre of land. If you have less than one acre of land, your fence may only be four feet tall. And that's really.
Questions, comments, and questions?
Yeah, I'll come up with four feet and six feet. On any per.
Um, so trying to stay true to that original intent of keeping downtown open and not chopped up. We thought, okay, what are the types of developments where somebody might want a fence to separate them from a pedestrian area? We came up with schools, we came up with parking for people next door, we came up with a large, like St. Paul's parking lot was a really good example of. It's a very large parking lot, and it has a very nice bow wrought iron fence separating it from the sidewalk next to it. And all of those uses we came up with were larger than one acre. But we were also trying to think, okay, what other uses might I want a fence for that are not separating me from the pedestrian area? And what immediately came to our mind was the front patio of Howlingburg. So they have a little fence that sort of denotes their patio space for outdoor heating. So the four feet is sort of intended for those sorts of uses. So you're not trying to separate so much as you are trying to define an atmosphere.
In addition to Mister, what Mister Young had shared with us, that also came from some of the comments that we've received at the permanent center. Four foot and six foot is consistent with readily available fence material at the yards. They, it does not require a special order in most cases, and they do have the option to purchase it off of the store. Really, it was, that was the other part of it, was to have something that was readily available and didn't incur substantial costs.
I guess my concern is that, I get what you're saying, you got paths there. There's a lot of places going up and down Main Street. On your side. I guess I'm not quite really truly understanding though, saying that all of the four foot are only permitted on parks. I guess that's part of what I'm saying.
The other part that we did talk about as well for that was the thought was trying to stay away from that, that compound effect, where you have small parcels and tall fences, where the larger parcels, you can accommodate a taller fence without getting that compound feel that if you could imagine, it's hideous, it, hideous it would be, you know, that same fence at Howlingburg they did at six foot. That would completely change the facade of that building. So we really, really do want to stay away from having that, particularly.
The fence in front of Howlingburg is leaning?
Yes.
I'm, I'm concerned that the change of ordinance doesn't go far enough despite the change of industrial south fence, um, fence.
And so a similar question came up at city council. And we, as part of the red line that's in fact that you'll see, we did not make any changes to the stylistic characteristics required by this. For our, Mister Van Gundy and I's intent in working on this was just to make fences permitted. We weren't really thinking about making changes to the stylistic.
Getting close to our special review board.
Yeah.
I think we are getting close to it.
With what you've proposed, is it possible, is, is there a fence that's allowed that will completely block out all of the road? When you say a metal fence, I think that's that you can see through. All see-through type fencing or some of these solid?
In a separate chapter of our code, eleven thirty, no, that's not right. I'm looking at Marty, but Marty's not looking at me. We have a separate fencing chapter which has regulations about how transparent fences must be. So you would not be able to put up like a slab of sheet metal, which I believe is what we're here.
Well, I, I just again got reiterated the fact that we have, we've always talked about the fact that Main Street not that many of them are here. And now here we are defining. And now here we are defining fencing for something greater than one acre. So I just can't, I don't think it's written right. I'd be in fine table this month.
I would agree with Mr. Sarah. So at this time, we will do any comments from our audience members on this, who would like to speak on this issue. Make your way to the podium, state your name and address.
Melanie J. Roll, 3008 Thornton Street Northwest, North Canton. We're here primarily because of the school property, and the fencing, I think, issue is on all districts now. But as far as the school property, we were wondering what the setbacks would be for this fencing on the adjoining properties. There's dwellings on, beyond both sides, actually. If they're going to fence the parking lot on the west side, they're certainly probably going to fence the ball field. So what would the setback be from the fencing from the adjoining residential property?
Do you want to know? I don't, or what's that? So the zoning would permit the fence up against the property? There's not a setback for the fence. Now, specific to the schools, all we have from, for the parking lots, the two parking lots that were discussed at a previous planning commission meeting, those were preliminary drawings, as you know, and I don't believe they had detail in regards to the fences. That would be something that that we would have as part of the development review once they do submit for those parking lots. At this point, we don't have any any construction plans, or we do not have any development review plans for the parking lots or the fences on that. But those would be items that would be addressed on the plans.
Currently, they could put a fence right on the property line. And to have that changed, it would have to go through the review process, and someone would have to decide what that setback might be.
So there, there is not a setback requirement, so they, as this is written, they could put the fence up against the property. They could not go over the property. They could go right against that property. Was there a property line in particular?
I think the property west of the ball field.
Can you put that on the overhead?
And then the height of that fence is still over review as far as what you just said.
Table, yeah, yes, that's what we're discussing, is that change the ordinance to discussing the height. So the school property, and I believe that's larger than an acre for this, and so that would, that's what I, we were just discussing, that it would be for taller than four feet would be permitted on one acre lots.
Would there be a possibility that when you're reviewing this height and this other thing that you do, there's some kind of setback arrangement? Or would it be just on a case-by-case basis?
Well, as Martin mentioned, it comes, it's whatever is in our zoning code currently, which I believe, I was just trying to get to that to make sure, but I believe it is the zero lot, like fence is allowed currently by the zoning code. But if the property, when they submit a development plan, that would get reviewed internally and possibly add for the planning commission, and there could be a recommendation based off of neighbors or neighboring properties that setback or the fence could be, but it is not required according to the zoning code as it is.
And it would be your guesstimation that this fence would probably be six foot high in that surrounding that school area? Is that because of the acreage?
It, well, by the zoning code, it would be, by the ordinance put forth today, it would be, they would be allowed to go up to six feet.
That's correct, yeah. At this point, I don't believe the school or the library has conveyed their intentions for specifics on the fence. There was some discussion in regards to placing a fence, but I don't recall there any any details as part of that conversation.
Okay, I think that's all that I have on that issue on fencing.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other audience members that would like to speak on this issue? Any more thoughts, comments from the commission members?
I think, Mr. Sarah, your comment is that your issue steps from just the taller than four feet on the parcel, larger than one acre.
Just to clarify, the only restriction this change here is the height forty-six, one-six feet based on the lots for the property. The chain link was not allowed in. Current.
Right, chain link is not allowed right now.
In different orders.
Yes, and vinyl is not permitted in Main Street South. As written right now, and then no fencing at all.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on the table.
We have a motion, we have a second. I would comment that we can, you know, this is a recommendation to council. So can, any comments regarding this issue? So do we have any other motion on this issue?
I'll make a motion to approve it with one exception, and crossing out.
Motion to approve. It's a recommendation to 1136 dot one A. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll send it.
We have a motion and a second. Do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lapage?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Delface?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalson?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Just for the record, I want to be clear, make sure we know that that is Section 1136 dot one five subsection A subsection be recommended to remove from the test. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ordinance number 27-2024. The ordinance finalizing annexation of three parcels from Washington University on Piles Street Northwest by establishing zoning for the property, it's residential, single-family, large lot, R-D7B, and establishing the City Council voting for. Three. So, Mr. Young, if you would like to explain this ordinance, please.
So these are three very recently annexed properties to the city. Every time the city annexes a property, it has to establish zoning and a voting warrant. The zoning part requires planning commission of consideration, so here we go. The properties are currently used as single-family homes, were zoned as single-family homes in Plain Township, and we are proposing to zone them as single-family homes now that they're being owned. That's really all of it.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commission? Any comments from audience members on this item? Any comments? I would entertain a motion on this agenda item.
So, Chairman, I would like to refer to ordinance number 27 to use in number two.
We have a motion, I will second. If you can, a second, so we can do a roll call.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Delface?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Lapage?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalson?
Yes.
Next, on the agenda is ordinance number 26-2024. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of North Canton, requesting of fifteen parcels in the City of North Canton, that ordinance would be amendment procedure set forth in Chapter 1182 of Planning and Zoning Code from their existing classifications to Main Street Center. Mr. Young?
So the proposal in this ordinance 26-24 is to rezone an entire city block, which is bounded by Power, Whitwer Park, and Tap Streets on the backside of the Hoover District from primarily light industrial to Main Street Center. So we are, the city is incredibly thrilled to have Debold Next Door world headquarters here in the city. We are wonderfully pleased that all of their expansion they've had and all their contributing to the community, but looking ahead to if they continue to expand, we noticed that some light industrial zoning is really close to a neighborhood. And so we'd like to sort of preemptively create a better buffer between the industrial uses and that close by neighborhood in Ward Two, which is also very historic. So the proposal is to rezone the whole block from, as I said, primarily light industrial to Main Street Center. The block is primarily owned by the owners of the Hoover District, and this would prevent them from building a new factory on that block. It would give, therefore give more separation between the neighborhood and any industrial use that may be created. In the whole block, they are primarily vacant lots of the buildings that still stand. There are two commercial, several rental homes, and we believe two owner-occupied residences. Which, if you remember, last year, I believe it was, you all approved an amendment to the Main Street Center District that allows residential uses in that district as long as they are not on a major, major street, Main Street. The commercial uses and the existing residential will still be within this district, to the best of my understanding, if Marty can correct me.
That's consistent with the amendment that we placed through, as Mr. Young had mentioned, allow the residential uses to continue.
So our intent is really, looking ahead, we haven't had any applications or anybody approach us at this point, but we, looking ahead, want to make sure we have appropriate spacing between industrial uses and neighborhood.
Questions from committee members?
This, this block is a master block on the west end of the parking lot. And then you have residential homes, and you have commercial, like ACY communications, that's in this block. I'd like to see a total plan of what's going to occur. What would we start? I mean, you're mentioning here, Debold Next Door is expanding its operations, so you're working, having some interest in future development. Also, are hearing other things in that area of what's, what's the master plan? Why aren't they presenting something?
So this, this zoning amendment isn't at the request of the property owners, the city is putting forward to sort of preempt to the possibility of a factory being built on. So Debold Next Door is, so right here, south of the block we're proposing, is already a light industrial use that is functionally grandfathered in to the Main Street Center because it preexisted. Myers Control Power is leaving, and Debold is taking over that space. Obviously, light industrial right across the street from a neighborhood is not ideal, but it preexists, and we are not allowed to take it away from them. But what we'd like to prevent is that light industrial use expanding further along this border with the neighborhood. So by zoning it Main Street Center, light industrial uses are not permitted now, and since none exist currently, they would not be grandfathered in. As you identified, the largest parcel here is functionally a gravel lot. This entire south side of the block is now vacant lots. There are a number of vacant lots on the north, and then you have ACY, some rental properties, and two owner-occupied homes closest to the neighborhood. So the zoning amendment isn't coming with a proposed development, it's to control what future development might occur, which is the intent of zoning.
We can always control down the road too, I still like to see a master plan. And you have a large, existing residential lot. I just, I'm only one person here, but I'd like to see what their plan is to that side. I know you can't answer, but I'm only one person sitting here, so.
To an extent, I understand where you're coming from, but if they wanted to design and build a small factory fully compliant with our zoning, to build on that block today, and they owned it, it would never come before you did. It would be fully permitted, Mr. Van Gundy would have to approve it, and there would be no opportunity to say, whoa, wait a minute, we didn't want that right next to here. It's their property rights, we have to let them.
As a preemptive move, I think the city is doing the right thing, they're taking this step to protect residential properties from that. All respect, Debold, that's going past to develop Hoover, Hoover Plan and property, you have no idea. It's the best opportunity to start protecting. In the same vein, I was just going to say, this will do nothing but benefit the neighborhood.
That was certainly our That was certainly our reasoning and putting it forward.
At this time, would there be anyone from the audience? Any other comments from the city? Comments from the commission members? If not, I would entertain a motion on this issue. All motion to approve this. Your intention. And we have a motion, second? Motion and second, vote call please.
Mr. Delpays?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
No.
Mr. Lepage?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalson?
Yes.
All right, next. And at the end of the ordinances for this evening, um, any other business before the commission? So, okay, any, do you have any comments?
No, that covers everything.
Um, and I just want to mention, I know somebody, somebody on this members came in there regarding school with a fence. Just, just so you know, as Mr. Van Gundy mentioned, you know, that still has to go through development review, no matter what the ordinance is. They'll go through the port development review with the city. Guidelines that are in place will be placed on that project. I know, I'm sure things like fencing, lighting, et cetera, are a concern. Those are on every project. If it's deemed necessary, it will come before the commission of a review based off of Mr. Van Gundy's review. So just so.
Are we able to make any comments at all on that? Because we all came to hear the notion.
I need a name, please.
Sorry, Jean Gonzalez, 332 Portage Street. It's not just the fencing and the lighting. There's been rumblings going on regarding the traffic patterns. And when we, and I understand this on the agenda, and I'm going out of bounds here, but we, this is the second time we're showing up for a meeting and it's, nothing's coming of it. So as much as your time is precious, so is ours. We, when we first went to the meeting at Hoover and the high school, and they presented all of this school ideas to the neighborhood, they made certain statements and agreements. One of them being that Portage was not going to be a main through way for traffic. And we are hearing rumblings now that Charlotte is overburdened with traffic, which is not our problem. Debold decided to move in there, and now there's all this extra traffic. And we've been told that because of that, they want to route more traffic onto Mill Press Ring. And now these exits off of these new parking lots, onto Portage. Our street, number one, is not made for the amount of traffic we have right now because of the roundabout. Never mind added traffic from that situation. And number two, I can't speak for everybody that's here on our block, and there are people that wanted to be here tonight that couldn't be. But we're feeling pretty put off with a lot of the planning as it's on because A, we don't think this was a good location for the school, but we're just the peasant taxpayers. I don't need to be flippant, but you guys, they were going to put it where they wanted to put it. We gave our input about it, and it, whatever, things happened. But at this point, when it comes to lighting, fencing, traffic flow, this is our property values. None of us signed up to live in a place where our street is now going to be handling the traffic that it is. And so we're just, I know this wasn't on the agenda, and I really appreciate you letting me have this minute to quickly speak this. If this is going to be an issue clearly at a future meeting where we actually get to speak on it and our feelings are taken into account, that'd be really appreciated if it could be clearly conveyed to the community as to when that will be.
Can I make a point? Yeah. I can share with you a couple of things that the traffic is expected to improve with the completion of the roundabout. I can also share the police department, the fire department are coordinating with the school district to come up with a traffic pattern that works for the community, particularly as the completion of the roundabout. Now, the preliminary discussions that I was a part of that was not by any means a completed discussion, but the intent is to route the majority of the school traffic through the roundabout, which obviously is the opposite direction of the neighborhood. And, and again, once that roundabout is done, it's expected that the traffic would improve. That's the intent with that. Couple of things, a couple of other things. I'm happy to meet with you at any point on any part of the development of the school or the parking lots and answering questions. And well, that's what we're here for, is to answer those questions and, and help not only guide the applicant through the process, but the neighborhood as well.
I appreciate that, and it's not just that area there. Rim and West Gaples are complete cluster. Like, I don't know if you ever have to try to maneuver. I mean, I, we live on Portage and I completely avoid that area now. I don't even know the last time I went to that, that intersection because it's a mess.
And, and that was, and forgive me, I, I was remiss in missing the other part of that. The intent with that parking, the west parking, the school parking, the parking, the intent for that is to extend the queue for the pickup and drop off on that. So that's the other part of that that will improve the, the traffic situation.
And part of that will involve exiting and entering off Portage?
It would be an ingress, so that new.
So all the buses will be coming up our street?
No, no.
Okay.
Not the buses, this would be just the parents essentially, so. And we can, we can even meet after the meeting here, and I could pull up maps here and point and kind of show you the general direction of where it's headed. Again, it's not a final.
I just want to know, like, how am I going to get out of my driveway? Because again, during the queue up and the drop pickups, drop offs, I completely avoid that whole intersection. And I know you're saying this roundabout's supposed to fix it, but I'm sorry, but I think most of us on Portage see that you got, there were plans that were made that were supposed to prevent what's happening now. And now we're being told the roundabout's going to fix it, but still, Portage is a nice long convenient long street. I don't know what the roundabout is supposed to do to help prevent all these parents from sitting on our street. You know, somebody parks on our street, visiting somebody, and our street is barely even wide enough for that. So I'm, I'm just asking you guys to please consider us and please consider our property values and resale issues. Like, if somebody finds out this is how this is going to work, I don't think I would have bought my house had I known that this would have been the result. So that's, I don't need to take up more time. I know people have things to do. And I appreciate you listening and hearing us out, but to us, it's, it's serious. And we kind of feel betrayed in some ways already, so I appreciate your willingness to talk to us.
Absolutely, and, and as I mentioned, I'll, I'll gladly meet after the meeting here. We can pull up some maps and I can show you some of the early preliminary discussions of circulation factors. Now, with the caveat, I'm not a traffic engineer zoning permitting sign, but been part of some of the discussions. I'm happy to meet with you.
As long as there's going to be future public meetings and we're going to have clear communication of when they are and that we can be there, I won't make you sit there with me tonight. I, I just want to make sure nothing is done without, because a lot of people didn't really know about tonight either, unless somebody else had said something.
Yeah, I would recommend Frisian Alton Martin, but then also a council member, um, which is my city knows. Yeah. As those get submitted for development review, see if it does come before the commission for.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I was out of line. It's just a distraction, we never know when to show up.
No, that's okay, that's okay. We wanted to make sure.
This is the second time.
We know people came for that issue, so I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the path and hopefully get your voices heard.
There are also the public hearing for much of it. The ordinance has to go through more review, so there are more mandatory public meetings and public speed on that, so. Next one we do. The zoning.
Thank you very much.
Part of that.
The development plan will only be submitted if the zoning change is granted. Ben, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
The zoning change will only be, or, sorry, backwards. The development plan will only be possible if this zoning change is granted, is my.
So I think that's it for this evening, so I would have to say a motion. Motion to adjourn? Second, all favor?